Your live Steve.
All right. Good evening. It's 5:00 PM. This is a hearing of the Medina County Board of Commissioners regarding changes to the Medina County Department of Sanitary Engineering Code of Regulations as well as rates for sewer and water. With that, I will bring up Jeremy Cinco to brief us on the changes.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for all that are attending today. First, I'd like to start off with the Code of Regulations. We have been working on this for about a year and a half with a law firm of Albers &amp; Albers out of Columbus. Our past regulation, our current regulations was last adopted in 2013, so it's been about 12 years since it's been thoroughly updated. So we had a complete rewrite done of the document. One of the, a couple of the main things I can touch on as far as major, major updates here have to do with, excuse me, our delinquent shut-off process, which currently we've sent a notification out in the bill. However, this process allows, where we notify the customer of any type of water shut-off, they have essentially two days before the shut-off date to request a hearing, at which time they can meet with a hearing officer and give their reasonings for why water shouldn't be shut off in their case. And then there's a determination made at that point, which is a little bit different, like I said, than our current process. A couple other items that we've added in this is a well protection head chapter to protect our, a couple of our wells that we have. And also, we added our septic hauler requirements and procedures to this document. We have made this document available for public review. I would like to make note that we did add, or I did add a couple, a little bit of language here to chapter, or section 406.05. And at the end of that, I added the permit application fee may be waived at the discretion of the sanitary engineer. And then I also added section 406.06, and it states that a permit application will be required for any change in use at any commercial or industrial property. I'd like to point out that that has always been our process. However, it wasn't very clear in our regulations, so I just added that verbiage there just to be, to be more concise and clear on that.
But you also have given yourself the ability to waive if it's sensible to waive?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that has to, and that, and that permit application fee, correct, that's the $50 permit application fee that we have. Yep. And as part of this other, as part of this rules and regs, our new Code of Regulations, we have a fee and charge schedule. Currently, the, all these fees are contained in about five or six different resolutions. And what I did was basically consolidate all those fees from those different resolutions into one, one schedule. That fee schedule has also been on, is on, is available for review. And one of the major notes here that I have for, to make note of here is actually the sewer and water rates, as a, has a proposed increase to that. On the sanitary sewer side, there are two components to the sanitary sewer bill. There is a sewer user rate and a debt fee. The recommendation this year is to increase the sewer user rate from $28.75 per equivalent residential unit by $4 a month to $32.75 per month. Excuse me. The sewer debt fee at $6.50 per ERU will remain the same. A couple of the reasons for that sewer, for, for the increase in the sewer rate is, one is the employee wages and benefits. That's what, you know, this is what that sewer user charge covers. It also covers costs associated with maintaining the system such as supplies, materials, repair services, utilities, equipment, and transfers into other sanitary sewer funds that are not, that don't have a revenue source. Examples of that are our IT fund, a construction fund, and capital improvement funds. Based on our budgetary numbers for 2025, we are anticipating a $250,000 deficit in the operating fund with the, even with the proposed increase. However, in the next year, 2026, we are anticipating of making that difference up. The proposed increase on the sewer user rate would increase a residential bill by $4 per month. On the water side, there is a proposed rate increase for the water user rate. That would be 50 cents per thousand gallons. The water operating fund that this revenue source goes into, covers our, again, so very similar to our sewer, employee wages, benefits, materials, supplies, utilities, equipment, and also transfers money into funds that don't have a revenue source such as IT, construction, and capital improvement. Based on the budgetary numbers, we're anticipating a $400,000 surplus in the operating fund, and that is with the water rate increase. A 50 cent increase on a thousand gallons per, a 50 cent increase per thousand gallons would, would increase a residential bill approximately $2.25 per, cents per month, and that's anti, based on a 400, I'm sorry, 4,500 gallons per month usage.
Pretty much what I have on those topics. I don't know if there was any questions that we need to take on the Code of Regulations or the recommended rate increases.
I have a couple of questions.
Any questions?
That didn't come up the last couple of times we've talked about it. Based on current projections, when would you anticipate needing to go back for more changes to the rate schedule?
For, on the water or sewer or both?
Sure.
Both?
Okay.
Either. When would be the soonest we'd be talking about this again, based on current projections, do you think?
So for the water user rate, the next anticipated or proposed rate increase would occur in 2027. However, we may need to look at the water debt fee increase in 2026.
But if you increase your number of customers due to development, would that push out the 2027 then?
Potentially.
Like if you had several, you know, you know?
Subdivisions or large?
Subdivisions, 200 houses.
Or even some commercial.
Yeah.
That could definitely cause a reduction in, or postponement of, of, of any type of rate increase.
Well, we review it every year.
Right.
Yeah.
When we do our budget.
Yep.
And on, okay, and then on the sewer side, let's see. On the sewer side, the sewer usage charge would potentially increase in 2027 as well.
Okay.
But there is a proposed rate increase on the sewer debt fee in 2026. Right now is maybe at a $1.75 increase. That is for, to cover, the sewer debt portion covers all of our outstanding debt that we would take out for sewer projects. We have the Bar Screen project at Hinckley that that would cover. We have an electrical job coming out at Hinckley. And then we have Canby Building at Chip, or I'm sorry, at Liverpool. So this, the debt fee is, covers all of our debt responsibilities.
As well as the additional, I mean, we've talked about Route 18, that up, that replacement and rehab, and then of course, wastewater treatment plant in Chip, so we've got, we'll have to review that as well depending on, on other funding sources.
But to your point, Commissioner, I believe we do review this annually.
Yeah, but based on our expected and anticipated spends, this, this should be good for a couple of years at least.
The, on the sewer and water usage charge, yes.
Yeah.
At this point, we're trying to hold, hold off, well, we're trying to make this little incremental change rather than a big change in two, three years.
Correct. Yep. No, that makes sense. And then the changes to the, to the draft that were inserted, obviously those are in the bound package. But these are still pending approval, so it won't be a hard, it won't be, it won't be a change to this. This will be built into the final version.
That is correct.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Because it, you know, changes the page, page nation and everything else and down the line, so.
Well, it may not change the page because you've added very little.
It, well, it appears to from the version that we have in front of us.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah. I, Colin, you have a question?
No, I, I just want to make sure that-
I guess a little bit more discussion, if you wouldn't mind, before we hit the public hearing portion of this, of the definition of change of use. How, how we, how do we utilize that as a sanitary, yes?
Our definition of change of use would be any new tenant moving in or out of a space, whether it be, in this, that pretty much deals with commercial or industrial properties.
Right.
Whether it be a shopping plaza, tenant moving in or out, or a warehouse building, you know, where tenants are moving out, that's our opportunity to review rate, rates that we're billing for that, for that complex. It gives us an opportunity to make sure that we don't, you know, we're not missing anything as far as easements or shared usage agreements. So this is our opportunity to make sure everything is, is that, is that we have all the information needed to properly bill.
Just a business, oh, go ahead.
Just a clarification, when we use the line change of use though with zoning, if something's a restaurant and it stays a restaurant, that's not a change of use just because it's a change of owner. Like when you go to a zoning board of appeals, the line change of use is absolutely a change in what type of business.
Correct. However, a change in use, even though it's a restaurant to restaurant, if they're adding more seats to the restaurant, or reducing the number of seats, or it goes from, maybe goes to a takeout as opposed to, so there's all sorts, and those all change our billing.
That's what I was hitting at. So it, it, it wouldn't necessarily be a change, well, a change of customer could be the driver there too, because if you think about a business on the square that changes hands, you know, it may stay House of Hoonan and somebody else is operating it now. Would that be part of this?
If it's changing of ownership but nothing is-
Then I think we need a different, maybe line than change of use because that really is a kind of technical zoning.
It did, it does seem like a term of art a little bit.
And that's, that's, that's why I wanted the discussion on it, because they're, like, you're right, zoning has a different implication.
Right.
We know that health department likewise.
Yes.
Is still a restaurant, but they, but the new restaurant owner still has to go through the health department to do an application.
I agree, but, but I'm just saying the change of use, we may need different wording for us.
Okay.
Did you give any thought to any other terminology?
That has been the, the language that, in working with Mike Lyons.
Yeah.
That change of use seemed to be the proper terminology, but we can definitely review that.
When you go to somebody's zoning regulations, there's certain reasons you have to appear before the ZBA or the zoning commission, and change of use is kind of like-
Yeah. And I know like a change in use in the, like, as far as the, how the billing department would define change of use is different than maybe law for use of change of, is my understanding.
And, and I think it can be different too. I just, I'm looking at, because when, when I first saw that, I thought, is it really necessary to clarify that? Because if it's always been required, but it truly doesn't seem to read in 40601 that that would be, that, you know, no person shall construct or connect, connect, connect. It doesn't say continue use of a service line after a change in use or change in ownership. And I just wonder if definitionally that'd be a better place to, to put that in there. You know, continued use of after whatever would qualify as that change of use you're talking about there. So, I, because I think we're, I think you're, you're getting to the root of the issue, which is, well, yesterday I was, you know, Lemonberry, and today I'm Lemonberry, so nothing's changed. But, but the ownership's changed and, you know, there could be other drivers there, I guess.
Yeah, we're not too concerned if, if, like you said, change of owner, everything else remained the same. We're not so concerned about that. Typically, they'll call us and just, you know, there's an ownership change, so we change the billing name.
Yeah.
Now, if Lemonberry started adjusting the number of seats or, you know-
Went to add a bathroom.
Exactly.
Well, that's, that's why change of use, you may get a lot of pushback if somebody arguing with me. It's not really change, do you know what I mean?
I know that's my argument.
Maybe we do need to do change, we do, maybe we do need to do change in cost tomorrow.
Unless we modify the policy, it is a change of use, in which case that creates a whole new issue.
Or you just define that term.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the question.
Bring it to our definitions.
Well, this, this is one that needs to be, I guess, looked at.
Yeah.
That's why I brought up that we needed to make sure we clearly define what that means.
I think all-
And Kimberly Marshall, who's here from the city, I know, and will enter in the public comment, wants to obviously have some comments about this one.
And I think ultimately, we're, we're probably all saying, we're all working towards the same outcome, which is, I want our sanitary to, to be in there and involved in the permitting process to the extent there is something that warrants them taking another look at it. And, and in that sense, maybe that means even if it's continued use by the same customer and the business is staying the same, but we are adding a bathroom, we're adding this, and that would be all, that's how, how it operates and functions now. So.
Yeah, we could definitely look at the, like you said, we'll look at the terminology or define it in the, or define what change of use is in the definitions of the regulations.
Okay, all right. With that, go ahead and open up for the public session.
It'll make it easier for you.
Okay. For those of you that are on Facebook, go ahead and feel free to make a comment. We will then read the appropriate comments into the record, and hopefully we can either put it that way, respond to it now, or maybe respond to it a later date. So I know we've got a couple viewers. With that, Kimberly, you're here. Would you like to make some comments regarding this? Open up the public hearings portion of this.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kimberly Marshall, City of Medina Economic Development Director. Address is 132 North Elmwood. And I thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to talk about the proposed rate changes and verbiage changes to your Code of Regulations. Before we get into that, I did have a couple of questions on the rate changes. Mr. Cinco had mentioned for the sanitary sewer rate, it sounds like it's a $4 per month increase. Is that correct? For the sewer, but the debt fee stays at $6.50? Did I get that right?
It's $4 per ERU or equivalent residential unit.
Okay. So it's per ERU. And so is that for the entire system, including the City of Medina?
That'd be the entire customer base.
So it's all residential and business that will see that increase? And then when does that start?
Anticipated January 1, 25.
And just for the record, for those of on here, we had decided to go ahead and, the last time we did a rate increase, we did it, I'll say between billing cycles, and then people, the same day as they got the new bill, they got the notification it was going to go on.
Right.
So we've, we've kind of bumped this up to make sure that people are notified at least one billing cycle ahead that there will be some rate increases.
So the notification would be in December?
The next time the bill comes out.
And November's bill and December's bill.
It'll be in December's bill.
Because it's like two cycles of billing, right?
They are bimonthly for the most part.
Okay.
Right.
All right. And then on the water side, proposed rate, I think you said it was per 50,000 gallons, 50 cents?
50 cents per thousand gallon.
Per 1,000 gallon. Okay. Okay. So tell me how that works then. Is that, again, for residential and for the businesses, for everybody?
That's correct.
Okay. And is that also, I'm sorry?
The water doesn't affect City of Medina because you have your own water system.
Right. So that's why I was just trying to get, does that, in, does that rate increase impact us or no?
I wouldn't think it would impact the city, the water rate would.
Okay.
Well, they would have to take separate act, action, correct?
Right. That's what I thought.
The City of Medina would have to increase the rates if they wanted to, but it's, our rate doesn't change their water rate.
That is correct.
Okay. So this is for everyone except the city?
This would be for just Medina County customers.
Okay, there we go. Thank, thank you, Miles.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So I just wanted to clarify that. So, um, and then when you were talking about your budget, you were saying something about IT and some other line items. That's all within your budget. It's not IT overall for the county. That's IT just within your department, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So I did want to talk a little bit about the occupancy permits for the City of Medina, and specifically our non-residential occupancy permits. And I know we, we had a meeting, Commissioner Hambley and Mr. Cinco and Andrew Dutton from our office and Dan Gladish, to kind of talk about the process of, or modifying the process for non-residential occupancy permits. Right now, when we have a business that comes in, they apply for an occupancy permit. And in case, and these are cases where there are absolutely being, no modifications being made to the building. So, meaning there are no other building permits being issued as a result of this occupancy permit request. New business comes in, it may be small little mom and pop office, mom and pop retail, mom and pop restaurant. They're just saying, hey, business A moved out, business B wants to go in there, they, they fill out our non-residential occupancy application, there's no fee. We set up a time for a walkthrough for our building official and fire marshal to go in and just look at ingress and egress. They have to submit a floor plan to us. And if everything checks out, then our building official issues that occupancy permit. When the agreement, sewer agreement was modified or, or renegotiated a year or so ago, there was language put in there that for any change of use, meaning change of user, that applicant now has to go to the sanitary sewer office, apply for a sanitary sewer permit, pay a $50 fee, and then wait for them to review whatever it is that they need to review before our building official can issue the occupancy permit. So that gets a little problematic because it slows down the process. Businesses don't understand why they have to do all this, especially in the case of, hey, I'm just, you know, this office user, they moved out, new person moves in. They're not changing the toilets, they're not changing the walls, they're not changing HVAC, they're not changing electrical, they're not making any building changes. So our compromise, what we requested was to have Mr. Cinco be able to say, look, there's no, there's no need for the, for these applicants to come to his office and apply for, through his office and pay the extra $50 fee. So it's really not about the $50 fee. We could kind of argue about that or go over that. It's, it's really more about the process. So what we were asking is to have that process completely waived with the caveat that the City of Medina Building Department is committed to giving all of the information on our occupancy application and anything else that Mr. Cinco would like added to the application if needed, so that when we get that occupancy application where there's no modifications being made, we send all the information to Jeremy so that his people can review it and have it for, update his database, because maybe, maybe it is a Lemonberry situation. And this has happened, where, let's take for example, 24/7 Snap Fitness, same business, didn't change a thing, business sold, new owner. Under that scenario, that business owner has to go to his office, fill out the application, pay the $50, and there's been no change whatsoever.
But with this new language-
Yeah, new language, he can waive it.
It can be waived.
It says he can waive it. It doesn't say he will waive it. And that's what-
Right. I think that's, but I think that's appropriate. I mean, I think it, I think we need to have the ability to waive on a case-by-case basis. I think the situation you're describing is a perfect example of where it should be waived.
So I agree. I think it should be waived. But the question is, how do you envision this happening? I mean, are, are we now going to say, look, these ones, he's going to waive and we just give him notification? Or are they still going to have to go and apply and pay $50? I guess I'm not trying to understand the thought process.
Okay, whenever you have a change in the City of Medina, you say the, the user and so forth, they are required to get a permit from your, your municipality for that use, that change, correct? As you said, they have to have inspectors, they have to go check with the fire department, they have to go through all that. So you don't waive, you don't waive a permit?
Well, first of all, I'm only referring to, just to be clear, a non-residential occupancy permit. And there's no fee.
Right.
And they only are providing, so they provide, they fill out their information and they provide a floor plan, and they go and they look at ingress and egress.
And, and there's publicly, there's, there are safety reasons, and there are a lot of public, as term is, for the public safety, health, safety and welfare, the reasons why the city requires that. Right? You have a permit process, you do it, they spend the time, and the turnaround with the business relatively quick, I understand. The mayor is, to his credit, has taken a great initiative over the years and consolidated, made sure that that was a pretty painless as possible-
That's right.
Process and made it streamlined.
That's correct.
And, but it still requires a permit, though. We are, are entitled to the same thing for someone that uses the, the county sewer system.
So-
For the public.
I agree with what, I understand what you're saying.
And that's what we're saying. There's a permit required. What we're saying is, but we could waive the fee because there really isn't a change of use. Really not significant to the system, and therefore waive the fee.
I guess that's my question for you, Jeremy, is, in the situation as it was described, historically, it sounds like there's been a fee there, because, maybe because this language wasn't in there, they gave you the ability to waive it. But if, if there is no change of use, and I know I'm using that term somewhat loosely after our previous discussion, but if there's no change of use that requires you to say, something is changing that requires the attention of the sanitary sewer department, wouldn't that be the requirement or kind of the prerequisite, not prerequisite, but the scenario where you would exercise your ability to waive it?
I would say the permit that we had recently worked on that probably brought up most of this, the permit fee actually was waived in that situation where it was a tenant moving out and a new one moving in. I ended up waiving that permit fee for that applicant.
And going forward, that would be the same.
So to clarify, which one are you talking about?
The one at 777 West Smith.
West Smith Road.
Now, and what's the turnaround for reviewing the permit?
I would say for 99% of these, like, where there is nothing being changed and it's just a person moving out and a new one in, nothing's being done, a lot of times we can issue those the same day.
Okay.
If, if not, you know, a day or two, but it's not a long-term.
For a business permit, that's actually relatively quick.
I get, and I get nervous, I think to your point, Steve, I get a little bit nervous about saying, well, we, we don't have to because we're going to kind of delegate that to the city. And I appreciate where you're coming from too, Kimberly, in terms of making this more streamlined. But those are two different functions, you know, the city's function and what the city's looking at on that and what sanitary would look at. There could be something that best intentions, in spite of everybody's best intentions, that gets overlooked. And then three years later, we're wishing we had, you know, followed the process.
So I'm just trying to follow your logic because these modifications did not happen until 2022, when the sanitary sewer agreement was renegotiated. We, we didn't give this information to them, and they did not apply in the past, and they did not have an extra $50 fee.
Yeah.
This started just coming up in 2022. Now, with regard to the turnaround time, excuse me, now with regard to the turnaround time, maybe it's a day, maybe it's a week. In the case of the photographer, it was four to six weeks, right? It was longer than that because of the, this, was it a shared tap? Tell me again what, what, what the verbiage was on that one.
A couple of things. The, the reason that, that language got included in the agreement is because of our difficulties of trying to get new tenants from the city. When the city would have a new customer or new tenant moving into the city, we were struggling to get information to be able to permit those. That is one of the main reasons why that language got added.
For the non-residential occupancy, you were struggling? Because this is the first that I ever heard that you would have difficulty getting the information from the city. Because, I mean-
That was specifically why that language about the change in use got added.
Kimberly, the 2022 agreement was approved by your city council, your, your law director as well as the mayor.
No, I, I understand all that. It was all, but the point is-
And you disagree with them, and that's, you go to the chief of command.
It's not that-
That's fine. But we have an agreement for our reasons, for, to preserve our system and to, and to actually to enhance the value of our, of the sewer system in Medina because of the legacy issues that have been around. And do you end up with the shared use, the issues with people that were tapped in, where they're tapped in, trying to get easements to get access. All those things needed to be addressed in that contract, and they were. And this was created, that document was created to resolve those longstanding issues that go back to when the City of Medina contracted with the county to take over that sewer system.
So again, back to my original point, which I think is being missed with all of the legal agreements and so on and so forth. The request is very simple. It's a non-residential occupancy. There are no modifications being made to the building, which means there's no change to the sewer, to the water- There are no modifications being made to the building, which means there's no change to the sewer, to the water, to any of the things in the building. And we're asking that the business does not have to apply for the sanitary sewer permit with the caveat that the city is going to provide all the information to the sanitary engineer. So that you're going to still accomplish the same thing that you would accomplish, it's just that the person's not taking the extra step and having to pay the fifty dollar fee.
It sounds like that was the pre-twenty-two arrangement, and that's what caused the changes that were necessary? Am I misinterpreting that?
I would say that we would later find out that this new, a new business moved into the city and we have no permit, no record that anyone moved in or out, and that was the struggle that we had. Hence why we added that specific language for a change of use be added.
I think we can all agree, the time to get that information is when that person is coming into this business arrangement.
And to speak about that photographer permit that we talked about, in that situation, we found that we were, uh, there was three buildings tied onto one common private lateral, and there were on three, there was three separate parcels of building on each of the parcels. So we actually worked with the property owner to get a shared usage agreement together. So this way, the, each property, each each parcel would have a responsibility for that private lateral ever had to get maintained or replaced, or that there was an agreement in place that said, okay, this is how the three parcels are going to cost share that. Additionally, there was no easements on any of these properties. So technically, really, the the one part, a couple of parcels did have no access to fix or maintain their line. So we were able to get these documents squared away at the time of the permit. And once we issue a permit, all of our leverage to get those kind of documents to the to benefit the property owner are really gone.
And it goes into the history, just Kimberly, just for clarity, and since my colleagues weren't there, for clarity from the record. Originally, when those three buildings were built, it was one parcel. Then the city allowed the split without that shared use agreement. Normally, I know in cities like in Brunswick, they require those things to be fixed before they would allow a split. This one, and this is, this was created, and that's, obviously, that's a real exception. That doesn't happen very often, but that's one of the reasons why you have something like this.
Because had you not viewed it, you wouldn't have realized that was the the case there.
Yeah, we weren't, and we were only billing one of the three buildings.
So a couple of things, with respect, of course. I never got a call from the sanitary sewers office asking for any new business list. Because if that was the case, we would have been happy to submit that. But that was, in all the years that I've been here, the sanitary sewer never requested any information from my offices, economic development, asking for new businesses, so.
I mean, what what kind of a list?
Well, he's saying that the information on new businesses weren't, was not being given to the sanitary sewer engineer when when we have.
I guess I didn't interpret it that way, I I heard him say.
But that's not what he said.
I I thought he was saying that there's just, the the best time to do that is when there's, when that change of hands is happening.
But he said before that, he historically had not gotten the information, but the historically, the information wasn't requested or looked at. So that's the first thing, that's why I'm saying, like, we want to be a partner with 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 the sanitary engineer because obviously, there's development that we're going to work on, so that's the first thing. The second thing, where this came up with the issue of the photography studio on West Smith Road, where there's this little real estate matter, the business was being held hostage and the occupancy would not be approved until this agreement took place, which the attorneys were in Texas. So that, you know, we're talking about a one-woman band here, a photography studio, who was already in the city of Medina on the square. She's not going to flush the toilet more times now that she's in her new, I mean, so there's no new stuff going into the sewer. She's just simply saying, I wanted my own studio, I found this space at seven seven five or whatever the address was on West Smith Road. She filled out her occupancy permit, then she goes to the sanitary sewer, uh, fills out the permit there, and that's where the logjam happens. So now, she does not understand what's happening. She she's just trying to get her business up and running. She doesn't understand city government, she doesn't understand county government, but now she absolutely hates the city of Medina because she thinks it's our fault that this permit got held up for another four weeks. But Dan Gladish, our building official, who unfortunately could not, excuse me, could not be here this evening, is down in Columbus at training, went and talked to Jeremy, and Jeremy said, if you issue the occupancy, you're going to be in violation of your own rules or something like that. And so Dan backed off, and then, you know.
The situation that you're describing wouldn't be one where the permit would be waived anyway. This isn't a simple, we're stepping in and taking over, it's everything it's always been. This is the exact reason we need to have people in there inspecting it.
But, okay, so the question is, again, all all due respect, could that incident been accomplished and captured had we given Jeremy our occupancy application and said, Jeremy, here we have a new photography studio, she's moving from here, she's going into there, here's all her information? He would have researched, he would have found the same issue regardless.
And then she's already in and operating, and what leverage do we have to make sure that it's?
The leverage is that you don't hold up a small business. You work with the property owners and the real estate brokers, and it would have worked itself out. Why are we holding a small business hostage, especially a minority business? I mean, this was a a small female woman owned business, so.
I don't think, I don't think, I mean, again, I think that's, that is the the consequence of it not being up to up to par to begin with. I think the, nobody's intending to hold this particular business hostage, or any business hostage. It's just a matter of saying, these are the steps that need to make the system compliant, the the legal, uh, the easement arrangement compliant. And and I know from being involved in those transactions, as soon as that business is up and running, they're not going to be proactive in communicating with their council or other people's council to make sure this is fixed.
The business doesn't own the property.
No, I know, but whoever the, whoever you need, whoever needs to have pressure applied to them to take the next step, it goes away as soon as that, as soon as that business is functional.
Okay, so we have two of three commissioners that are lawyers, that's what the legal world exists for, right? So if there's a violation, weren't you a lawyer? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Erin.
You have to give me the logic.
I I wrote the law, but I typed that lawyer.
Oh, practicing without a license, so.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so, in a world where Kimberly has an attorney in an office, and maybe they're leaving, and maybe a realtor is going to take an office, so it's the same type, no real change of use, it's office to office, and they apply at your office. A, you're saying that's one to two days, and B, you're saying that that's likely a scenario where this gives you the ability to waive the fifty dollar fee, correct?
Correct.
And that's what I I think I would like to see happen when they are sensible, not huge change of use kind of things. I know that's a a common sense situation, I'd like, I'd like the city to be able to say to their business, you know, you got your fee waived, so that's settled, I mean, you're going to be looking at these and no huge modifications on the fee will get waived, correct? Okay, so that that was my first point. My second point is, I know we've been talking about the photographer, but was, is is that like an extreme circumstances with this with this split, like?
That was extreme.
So it it it's the extreme example where this is not something that's going to happen between the city, and you off in the photographer one?
So, just, Mr. Cinco, let me just comment on this, because I did pull a spreadsheet because I know some people are are data driven, so. This is organized by square footage, so I'll share that with you, but in twenty.
You sent that in the email, did you?
Well, only you got it, your colleagues did not.
No, I forwarded it to them.
Okay, so just to reiterate then, in twenty twenty-one, this scenario only happened four times, a non-occupancy resident, residential permit. In twenty twenty-two, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, fourteen times, then in twenty-three, it was only four, and then this year, this report was through, I think, the middle of October, so we got two, four, six, eight, ten on there so far, and that's probably all that's going to be for this year. So as you can see, the request is not, it's not a lot, but it does happen, and so my thought would be, so that Mr. Cinco's database and information, everything that he has, that we are going to share all of this information with him. We showed him at the meeting a copy of what our application looks like, and just said, if there was something that Jeremy wanted to add to our occupancy application, that we're happy to modify the application to make sure that he has what it is that he needs. So, um, so that, so that's the request, that's what what we are looking for here, is to streamline.
One-stop shop application?
Basically, our objection is she wants no permit application to the county.
With the caveat.
On on these, um, on these kind of projects, that normally we require a permit.
But used to not require the permit up until twenty-two.
Required them, we've required permits.
And kind of to touch back, when you were talking about how we, I may not have reached out to economic development, and that is true, I never did, but we've been trying to, we would communicate with the building department itself for years, trying to get, to get those, uh, try to understand when, you know, these ten, new tenants are moving in and out just within the city. Um, and also on the photography piece, um, you know, that permit was initially submitted to us in late August, and the move-in date was not until early October, so even that four-week process or five-week process that it took to get all those documents squared away did not delay the tenant from moving in when they wanted to move in.
Well, I'm I'm still trying to, I I don't want to belabor it really, but trying to think how that situation would have been better with a streamlined application. Because let's, let's just re revisit, let's pretend your system is in place on that particular arrangement. You send that information to Jeremy's office, they they dive into it, they're going to uncover the same issues that are there, and all that degree of difficulty. Are you are you saying then, because it's followed the streamlined process, they're just at the mercy of the cities granting the application at that point? Because I don't think that's a good.
No, they're at the mercy of the sanitary sewer, and he just admitted that.
No, no, I'm saying in your, in your, in your preferred world, where the city sends this streamlined application, it gets to, it gets to his attention, in in assuming we had done that in the photography situation, hypothetical situation. Uh, how would that have worked from there?
How would you have resolved?
What could, what could sanitary have done? Because at that point, the city's already issued occupancy, and nobody, it's going to be a problem that's going to get, the candle get kicked down the road for another however many years.
So in that scenario, he would still have the ability to research the situation and realize, okay, we needed it.
Fix, how do we fix the situation?
Same way you've, the same way you got it fixed.
The way we got it fixed, I think, is what you've said, is by unfortunately saying, until this is fixed, we can't sign off on.
Well, now he's saying, he changed the story, he's saying that they didn't hold up the permit. He's saying that the move-in date was October first, so.
Well, I didn't say they hold up the permit, I just said we issued the permit before the tenant would like to move, wanted to move in.
It, I think, yeah, he was clearly saying it took several weeks from the point it was, it was applied for.
So it doesn't really matter then, in this scenario, because.
Well, maybe it didn't matter to the, to the photographer, but I, but I think it, I think it matters to sanitary to get the, to get the situation resolved. And the lever they have to make that happen is the timing of the occupancy. And so if the city comes to them with this problem, if the problem gets presented to them in your, in in your proposed path forward, uh, and occupancy's already been granted, then I think that undermines the sanitary's ability to to resolve it.
Okay, but what changed? Nothing changed in the building, she didn't add any toilets, did she add anything?
It wasn't her fault at all, nobody's saying that it was her fault.
Right, it's not her fault, so why, we should not hold the business hostage when it's a property and real estate issue.
The reality is this, the alternative to that is having our sanitary folks knocking on every door, doing proactive inspections, and having the ability to shut down operating businesses, and that's even worse than the arrangement that you're talking about. The time to do this cleanup work is when there's nothing.
Over that issue, I'm sure we'd have the authority, once they're given a permit, we we can't cease providing the service. Now, I just, for clarity too, this same standard applies within the townships as well.
Countywide.
Countywide, within our system, and our building department you work with when it comes to those occupancy permits, correct?
And the city of Brunswick.
And it, and the city of Brunswick, so the same standard applies uniformly.
That's correct.
I thought we talked about that, and you said Brunswick doesn't, doesn't do occupancy permits.
I I don't know if they do an occupancy permit or not, but they notify us of, when, when they get notified of a new uh, business moving in or out, they notify us.
But the county does, the building department does occupancy permits.
The building department does, yeah.
Yes, so in the townships, so we're applying, we have to apply the same regulations throughout the entire system for consistency, and we're giving you that ability to waive the fee.
And you are committed to waive under sensible circumstance, what would, by le, by us adding this line? Which I like adding that line.
Right, I do too, yep.
Yeah, and I don't disagree, if it's a simple, like you've mentioned, like an a, an attorney moves out and a realtor moves in or something, and there's nothing getting changed. I mean, it makes sense to, I mean, we're not doing very much at that point, other than just researching the the property to make sure all of every, we're billing properly, and there's no outstanding easements or agreements that need to be, you know, reviewed. Aside from that, I mean, yeah, there's really no need for us to to make any charges for that.
So what is involved with an occupancy permit review, right? Because it sounds like your budget, you have an operating deficit, and now you're adding this extra burden to your staff to go and research. It's taught, could, tell me about the process, how is it that you're able to turn it around in one day?
It it's not necessarily an extra burden, we've always been doing it.
Yeah, but you just said before, you weren't always doing it because you weren't getting the information. So now, now you're getting the information because we're sending.
I'm a little confused.
Well, prior to twenty-two, you said that you were not getting this information, you were frustrated, and that's why this, that's why there were these modifications to this agreement.
Getting new, new businesses moving into the city, not that we weren't, but there would be businesses that would go in, go in, like if a restaurant moved out and a new restaurant moved in, we wouldn't necessarily be notified in those situations. So, you know, we would find out, oh, this person had moved in, and then we would reach out and try and and permit with them after the fact. So that's why we added that language, like I mentioned earlier.
So, in this case, where we have the the small little, you know, we'll just say office-to-office user, they come to your office and they apply, what what is the process, what does that look like? How is it you're able to turn it around in one day?
They, they'll submit an application online typically, we get notifications on the application, we review the, uh, we review the uh, parcel and look at the past permitting history, and if there's nothing that's of concern, then we go ahead and and issue a new permit, issue the permit.
So that can all occur in one day?
Yeah.
I I I would dare say that's easier than the the city's occupancy permit, because you have to involve more.
Does the permit then also give you the notification of who you should be sending the new bills to and stuff?
Yeah, we have permission where they would fill that out.
At this point, I I know we're kind of going over a lot of the issues we went on in our hour-long meeting before. This is a public hearing, I think we've given a lot of great latitude.
Well, I'm the only person here, so.
Yeah, I know, I know. Uh, at 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 this point, do you want to make any closing remarks, and then we're going to go ahead and and finalize the hearing then? No, no comments in the Facebook right now.
So you know, buddy, you've been online.
We've doubled the numbers of of people watching.
It's a low number.
Yeah, no, so, no, the request is, you know, to have the consideration to, which I appreciate that, that you are giving Mr. Cinco the ability to waive the fifty dollar fee. That, that's a star, I mean, that's not really, that's not really the, the the whole issue, it's just a minor part of the issue. Issue is more about the extra steps that it takes for a business to get moved in, so we were requesting, oh, can I add that spreadsheet back please? It's my only copy. Um, the request was really to consider a modification to the waiver of the non-residential occupancy permit in the situations where there are no changes, no building department changes being made, with the caveat that Mr. Cinco would still be given all of the information on our occupancy permits. So that's, that's the request.
For clarity, the the city of Medina issues an occupancy permit, we have a permit for the sewer, the sanitary sewer. So you're asking us to eliminate any sanitary sewer permit in those circumstances?
Yeah, sanitary sewer permit, because that's, that's what they're applying for, and. Yes, sanitary sewer permit because that's, that's what they're applying for and, yeah, yeah.
Just for clarity, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Is there anything else? No comments in the public, so entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moving to second, roll call please.
Harrison.
Yep.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambling.
Yes, all right, thank you, thank you for those that have joined us.